All right, we're live. And I now call this audio/video conference of public hearing of the Board of Trustees of Harlingen to order pursuant to the Governor's orders for temporary suspension of open meetings. This public hearing will be audio and video conference. I now call Mr. Julio Cavazos.
Thank you, Mr. Raymond, Dr. Cavazos, Board members. This is our Financial Integrity Reporting System of Texas Public Hearing. We are required all public hearings to inform the community on our results, results or the financial indicators from the Texas Education Agency. Mr. Ramon Mendoza, Administrator for Business Services, we're going to go, he's going to go over the results. So I'm going to hand it over to him. Mr. Mendoza.
Me, Jerry. You can.
I'm here.
Okay, go ahead, Raymond.
Perfect, thank you. As Mr. Cavazos mentioned, let me see if I can share my screen. Can y'all see that?
Yes.
Financial integrity system of Texas. Okay, perfect. Board members, Mr. President, Dr. Cavazos, and senior team, every year we are required to have a public hearing regarding our first rating. So what is our first rating? And what is first? First is a financial accountability system for Texas. School districts developed by TA back in 1999 by Senate Bill 875 of the 76th Texas Legislature. The primary goal of course is to achieve quality performance in the management of school districts' financial resources. Okay? So the school first accountability rating system assigns one of four financial accountability ratings to Texas school districts. To receive a superior rating, we must earn eight, ninety to a hundred points. To receive a B or substandard rating, we must earn eighty to eighty-nine points. And to earn a C, mid-standard, we must earn sixty to seventy-nine points. And unless substandard achievement is below fifty-nine points. Again, any school district that receives a substandard achievement of a correct action plan with TA, they were precommunicated, developed, and the ratings were assessed based on the response for each indicator. And follow the following questions along with our brief explanation of each question and our response to those indicators. The first indicator has to do with our annual financial report. That basically says that we must file our annual financial report to TA by November 27 in our case. Since we have a June 30 fiscal year deadline, we must submit it by November 27. And we did that for the 2018, 2019 square. In addition to that, did we receive a clean audit opinion? That means that we received an unmodified opinion, and we did. We did that. We strive to have a clean audit each and every year. Question two B, did we have any disclosure of any material weaknesses in Internet control? And we did not. So we passed that indicator as well. Indicator number three, we made timely payments of all of our debt service payments. And obviously, we did. We make payments February 15 and August 16 each and every year. We strive to make those payments probably at least two or three days before they do. Before then, we made timely payments to other state and federal agencies, like the Teacher Track System, Texas Work Force Commission, or the IRS. And we strive to make each and every payment when it's too on or before the deadline to each and every entity. So those five indicators, we have to score, had those indicators, really yes. Indicator six through fifteen, we have the opportunity to earn a maximum of ten points on each indicator. This year, we earned a maximum points for all indicators except indicator number seven. And that indicator had the following. When the ratio of current assets to current liability ratio for the school district is sufficient to cover short-term debt, the ratio for our district has to be three percent three or higher. Our ratio was two point six nine. So there, we earned eight points. This is one of the indicators that last year, we improved on. Last year, we earned six points. And this year, we earned eight points. So we went by two points. In addition to that, last year on question number, indicator number six, which is right above that, was the number of days of cash on hand and current investments in general fund for the school district sufficient to cover operating expenditures. This indicator, this year, we scored a maximum of ten points. We have 125 days on hand as cash. Last year, we scored an eight, so we improved two points here on this particular indicator. The rest of the indicators, we scored a ten. In particular, we pay close attention to indicator number eleven, was the school district administrative coverage equal to or less than the threshold for our district. The standard for our district is eight point five percent of our total operating expenditures in the general fund as it pertains to our administrative costs. Current ROA is eight point two five, so we had that indicator and we were awarded ten points. Another indicator that we pay close attention to is indicator number thirteen, which is easily, it's easy to follow as well. Then our previous submission through TES, we did that submission equal to our financial auditor report that we submitted back in November of '27. And obviously, we try, we strive to have that POC report of our financial data that exactly to that audit report. And we do that each and every year. Indicators fourteen and fifteen, the external auditor indicate the annual financial report was three of any instances of material noncompliance. And of course, it answer, we are, so we were awarded a ten full points. So based on our responses and based on our ratios and responses, our overall score was a ninety-eight. Last year, we scored a ninety-four, so we improved four points.
Wow.
Our overall rating for the 2019, 2020 school year, based on our 2018, 2019 school year was an...
Wow.
Again, all this means that we have an excellent CFO that is an excellent steward of our public finances. The next slide is a comparative analysis for the past 10 years. Again, if you look at these two columns, this year, we scored a ninety-eight as compared to last year, a ninety-four. And you can see that our indicator six, we went from an eight to a ten. At indicator seven, we went from six points to eight points. So that is the ninety-eight points for our district with a 2019, 2020 school year. Other required disclosures are as follows. Okay, reimbursements to the school board and superintendent, each paid by the district on behalf of the school board. And this is, this is a schedule of our superintendent reimbursements, as well as our board members by name and by category. It includes meal, rocking, transportation, motor fuel, and other. It includes fees and dues that our district pays on behalf of our superintendent and our school board. And this is for the 1890s school year. Another required disclosure is outside competition by superintendent. So the superintendent did not receive any compensation from any vendor outside the school district. Gifts of $200, $250 or more, school board trustees, superintendent, and first-degree relatives. The school board and superintendent did not receive any gifts of $250 or more from any School district business transactions with school board members for fiscal year 2018, 2019. The school district did not conduct any business with our board members. Superintendent's contract. Again, the requirement for a public hearing again is to provide our committee review with a copy of our superintendent's contract. And we have done that as well. The copy is available at our boardroom for inspection as well. So this year, total school districts that received a rating, a superior rating for the state of Texas, eight hundred ninety-seven school districts received a superior rating. That's about eighty-eight percent of our total school districts in the state of Texas received a superior rating. Regional one school districts, their average, our average is sixty-eight percent of our school districts in region one received a superior rating. So that's just some information for you guys. I know last year, one of our board members asked for us to provide that information. Again, we improved by four points. We have an excellent CFO that guides us, as well as a very conservative board and a very conservative superintendent. Many questions or concerns on our report for this year.
Well, thank you, Raymond. I appreciate that presentation. And, you know, again, this is the, you know, the 18th year of the financial ratings, you know, established by TA back in 1999. We've always received a superior rating or an A rating that started five years ago. You know, they, they put that into a letter rating, so we got a, we've been having an A. So we're very happy about that. And certainly, we have a great team of business office staff that do a lot of the work and appreciate their effort. I'd be glad to answer any questions the board might have. This is a public hearing, so the public is invited to make any statements.
Mr. President.
Yes, sir.
Go ahead. Julio, last year, we were ninety-four percent. Is that right?
Yeah, we received ninety-four out of a hundred. Yes, sir.
And what about the year before that?
I believe it was ninety-six. Raymond, can you go back up there?
Yes, sir.
Ninety-two.
It was ninety-two?
Yeah.
Ninety-two.
Well, just, you know...
And before that, ninety-six.
Thank you and your staff for such an outstanding job. You know, you got to hit a hundred now. You keep going up every year. There's nowhere to go except a hundred. You know, but fantastic job again, and just congratulations to you and everyone in your department.
Thank you. Yeah, no, that's what we strive for. Hopefully, next year, you know, we'll get that hundred and, you know, at least, you know, continue with, with the, with the As and a superior rating. Thank you.
Thank you, Ray. Anybody else?
Just want to comment, say, great job, Julio and the team.
Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Leo.
Mr. President, if I could, I'd just also like to add my congratulations. You know, the, the ability of our district to hold its head high in the, in the community and, and know that our, you know, who we represent and what we're doing is grounded on such strong financial foundation and is, is tremendous. It offers us opportunities that other districts don't get. And so I too just want to congratulate your team, you, your team, the senior team, Dr. Cavazos, the, you know, the whole group, because it takes, it takes all the pieces pulling together to make, to get a ninety-eight. That does not happen by accident. So congratulations.
Thank you.
One more comment. Go ahead, Mr. Post. Shane, does, you'll put this in our, I guess, our newspaper section and so forth? Because this is, like Belinda said, this is something we want the public to know that, that we have this outstanding rating, watching out for the public's interest. So thank you.
Absolutely.
So, Mr. President, may I comment as well?
Yes, ma'am.
Please. Yes, I would just like to join my congratulations with those of our colleagues on another extraordinary, extraordinary result of incredible work and the strongest ethical model possible in public education. You know, this is a time when, as one of my colleagues said, we don't always see this. And Harlingen, however, is, is the outlier in the best of all possible ways. And so Julio, for you and for all of your staff, and for all of our senior team who have worked so hard to help make everything happen to the highest level, and it all contributes, it all contributes, we want to say congratulations and thank you. This is what the trust of our community is built upon, and you have provided that for us at all times and never more so than this year. So thank you very, very much. We're excited, and we're very proud, and please do publicize.
Thank you, Ms. Flory. Dr. Cavazos.
Be back.
Mr. President, I also want to echo the sentiments of the board. Julio Cavazos, our CFO, with his entire team, ICI, Dr. Raymond, and the others, do an incredible job. And to Dr. Reiniger's point, the stability of a district is dependent on fiscally responsible financial management. Julio and his team have brought to this district many accolades, years and years of accolades, and, and the transparency is critical for our community. So I want to thank Julio and his team for an incredible job and keep up the great work. Thank you for what you all do every day.
Thank you very much. And again, you know, we do have an awesome business office staff that, that, you know, does most of the work, so we certainly appreciate that, and, and thanks, you know, to, to our staff.
Thank you. Thank you, Julio, Mr. Mendoza, Ms. Ambriz, everybody. Thank you all. Mr. Stubart, this is a public hearing. Do we have any?
No, sir. No, sir, we do not.
Okay. We don't have any, anybody for the public hearing. So with that, I adjourn this public hearing.
We're still live.
Thank you. We'll move on to the Pledge of Allegiance led by Mr. Shane Stubart.
Thank you, Mr. President, trustees, Dr. Cavazos, administration, and audience. Tonight's pledge will be led by Ryan Garcia. Ryan is a fourth-grade student at Zavala Elementary and has been a part of the Gifted and Talented Program since kindergarten. Ryan is an all-A student and continues to strive to maintain his excellent academic standings. He has represented Zavala Elementary in UIL Social Studies and Robotics Club. This year, he is participating in the Zavala Newscast and is excited to share his charismatic personality with the Zavala School and staff. Ryan enjoys spending time with his family and supporting his siblings in their extracurricular activities. He is a big Cardinal fan. He especially supports the Harlingen Cardinal baseball team, which his brother has been a part of playing for. Ryan also loves to see his older sister cheer at the Conno Freshman Academy Ravens. During his free time, which I don't know how he has free time with all that stuff he's got going on, Ryan enjoys reading, drawing, and watching movies. He plans to attend the University of Texas, where he wants to major in the medical field. His parents, Ruben and Cecilia Garcia, are very proud of all his accomplishments and his future endeavors. Ladies and gentlemen, Ryan Garcia.
Ladies and gentlemen, everyone, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. A pledge allegiance to the public, which stands one nation under God, in the boot of liberty and justice for all. Thank you. You may be seated.
Thank you. Great job, Ryan. We'll move on to the awards and recognitions today. Item 2A, the National Merit Scholarship Program recognitions. Ms. Melissa Parker.
Good evening, Mr. President, members of the board, Dr. Cavazos, members of the senior team, and audience. Tonight, we would like to recognize the district's commended students in the National Merit Scholarship Program. The National Merit Scholarship Program is an academic competition for recognition and scholarship that began in 1955. High school students enter the National Merit Program by taking the preliminary SAT National Merit Scholarship Qualifying Test. More than two-thirds, which is about 34,000 students of the approximately 50,000 high scores on the PSAT and MSQT, receive letters of commendation and recognition of their outstanding academic promise. This year's commended students from the HCISD are from Harlingen High School South. And tonight, we have James Abbott's parents, who are going to give him a certificate online so we can see him. A big round of applause for James Abbott from Harlingen High School South. Our other student is also from Harlingen High School South, and it is Justin Armstrong. And I believe his parents are available as well. There they are. Oh, my gosh. And so we have, these are our two students. So Mr. James Abbott and Mr. Justin Armstrong from Harlingen High School.
Any comments from the trustees?
Any comments for the trustees?
Mr. President, yes, please.
Go ahead, Dr. Reiniger.
Thank you. I just, I'd like to just recognize the hard work and the, you know, the dedication that you all have put in to get to this position, to put yourself in this place, to be recognized with this tremendous award. We are so particularly proud of you all. Thank you for, for the dedication, and we know you're going to do great, great things. So congratulations.
Thank you, Dr. Reiniger.
Mr. President, may I speak, please?
Yes, ma'am, of course.
Yes. I would like to join our board and all of our colleagues throughout the district in congratulating these two fabulous students and, and saying, wow, wow, wow. You have set the standard now for everyone else to follow, and we are super HCISD proud of you. You know, this is an extraordinary honor, and it's one which can never, ever be taken from you. You know, you will have this honor and be proud of this honor for the rest of your life. And please know that we will be proud of you and will follow your pathways wherever you go for years to come. You know, you, you really have distinguished yourselves, your families, and your school district, and your community says thank you. Congratulations.
Thank you, Jerry. Mr. Armstrong, Mr. Abbott, congratulations. You know, exactly what Ms. Flory, Dr. Reiniger said, we're very proud of you, and we're happy that you represent us, and you're going to represent us as you move forward with your, with your, with your college careers and in your professional life. So congratulations, and we're very proud of you. And I'm smiling under the mask. Anybody else? And now we'll move on to item 2B, the recognition of PTSA Students of the Month for November 2020. Ms. Brianna Vella Garcia.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. President, board members, Dr. Cavazos, administration, and audience. Tonight, I will be recognizing our November PTSA Students of the Month, and they are joining us in tonight's Zoom meeting. The students you see on camera, they represent PTSAs of Harlingen High School, Harlingen High School South, Early College High School, and Harlingen School of Health Professions. This video will be available to watch to the public on our HCISD YouTube page following this board meeting, and so we hope you enjoy.
My name is Sidney Patillo, and I'm a senior at Harlingen High School. I'm a member of PTSA, NHS, and I'm on the varsity basketball cheer and track team. I'm very passionate about basketball, and I hope to one day play in college and get a scholarship for it. I plan on going to Texas State to study kinesiology and hopefully in the future be an athletic trainer. I'd like to thank all my coaches for always like pushing me to my full potential, because without the constant support, I wouldn't be where I'm at today, and I, I'm forever thankful for that.
My name is Connor Redden, and I'm a senior here at HHS. Some of the closer, I've been, I've been a member of the PTSA since I was in middle school. I am a varsity football player. I play tight end and long snapper. I also volunteer in some church activities, such as food distribution, and I was an actor in the church's native nights. But probably the most important one was when I was a flag football coach for the Boys and Girls Club, because I was able to teach young kids the fundamentals of football and how to have fun and teamwork. I'm very passionate about football. I eat, breathe, and sleep football. My family is also very passionate about it. We traveled all around the states, went to many games in camps such as Texas Tech, Kingsville, UT, Permian Basin. But we've also been out of state and attended some, like the Manning Passing Academy, where I was lucky enough to catch a touchdown and give a fist bump to two-time Super Bowl champion Peyton Manning. Well, I just got accepted to Texas Tech University, and I want to study digital media and professional communications with a sports media focus. And eventually, I want to take that degree and become a sports commentator or work in the sports entertainment industry. Some people I want to thank for my journey at HHS and in HCISD are my mom and my dad and my brother for always supporting me, encouraging me, and helping me become a better person. I also want to thank my second-grade Rodriguez Elementary School teacher, Ms. Rodriguez, for teaching me that learning can be fun and being the sweetest, kindest teacher that I've ever had.
My name is Isabel Moniz. I am a senior at Harlingen High School South. I am in varsity orchestra, and I am the varsity orchestra booster club president. And I'm in student council. I'm in NHS, and I am the proriferian of the NHS club. I am a manager of the varsity volleyball team. I'm in PTSA, and I hold the student decorating chair in PTSA. I plan on going to school either to UTSA, University of Texas at San Antonio, or North Texas University. I plan on studying psychology or physiology, because I want to be in occupational therapy before psychiatry. I haven't really decided which one I want to do yet, but both of the majors help with both the careers I want to pursue, or whichever one I want to pursue. So yes, that's what I want to do. I would like to thank my teachers, of course. All of my teachers have been amazing mentors, and they have helped me get the grades I have been able to get, because they've been amazing teachers. And even my extracurricular teachers, like my orchestra instructors, they've always been there for me and have been brilliant mentors in the sense that they've always been like, you know, push yourself and do your best. And of course, my parents, because they have been the reason why my grades have stayed so well. They have been, you know, there for me throughout every year of high school and have helped motivate me to do my very best.
I am Corinne Reiniger. I am a senior, and I go to Harlingen High School South. I'm in NHS and THS, and I am now a part of a team leadership subcommittee for Junior League Harlingen. And I'm a captain for varsity volleyball and a captain for varsity soccer. I am very passionate about personal health, fitness, nutrition, disease prevention and management, and being a part of a team that sets goals and works hard to achieve them. I am planning to go to UT and study public health in the College of Natural Sciences. And after I finish my bachelor's degree, I anticipate getting a graduate's degree in public health, too. And ultimately, I want to become a professor and teach students about disease prevention. I want to thank all my coaches in all of my high school and middle school years for being the best and making sports not only a personal outlet, but an enjoyable experience with many unforgettable memories.
Wow. Really.
Hi, I am Sarnity Brown, a senior from Early College High School. I was in student council for my junior year. Since eighth grade, I participated in the New Horizons Program. Extra activities I do outside of school would be working on the weekends and helping my younger twin sisters with online school while I attend to my... I hope to attend to Texas A&amp;M in Kingsville to work on my bachelor's degree in science. Therefore, my major would be in zoology. I would like to take a moment to thank my mom, because without her guidance, I wouldn't attend ECHS or work towards the credits I need to achieve my goals.
I am Alondra Hernandez. I am at senior at Early College High School. So I am the vice president of this year's class cabinet. I am the secretary of this year's student council. I am, this is my second time being an outreach editor for yearbook. And I was a former secretary for robotics engineering club. And I have also been involved in Battle of the Books Drama Club, and I volunteered locally at a San Fernando vet hospital. I am seeking to get into Texas A&amp;M in College Station to obtain a major in biomedical sciences so that I could pursue my dream career of becoming a veterinarian in the near future. I would like to thank my parents, of course, for always helping me and pushing me to achieve my goals and dreams, and for helping me become the person I am today.
My name is Bianca Ancisso, and I'm a senior at the Harlingen School of Health Professions. I'm a member of the LBN program with Valley Baptist Medical Center. And it does take off, take up a lot of my time since it's such an intensive program. But since I hopefully will be a licensed nurse once I graduate, I think it's personally worth it to sacrifice my other extracurriculars for it. Okay, my first choice right now, since I do plan on staying close to home sort of, is the University of Texas, San Antonio, UTSA, just because I really, I really love the city there. And I've visited the campus, and it's a really nice campus. And as far as majoring, they have an interdisciplinary study major kind of with collaboration with UT Health. So my plan is to go and get my bachelor's of nursing with UTSA, UT Health. And then using that, I really want to become a travel nurse. My mom, most definitely, because she's the one that pushed me to go to that high school in the first place. So I wouldn't even, I wouldn't have the opportunity to do any of this if it wasn't for her. And a lot of the times when it's gotten really difficult, she's been the one to push me through it and really just remind me how much it's going to be worth it in the end. So definitely her. And as far as educational, people, our principal for kind of collaborating with the hospital and giving us this opportunity in the first place. And also the instructors with Valley Baptist that took a chance on, you know, a group of high school kids. I mean, no one else would really, I feel like, risk that. So I'm really grateful that they took a chance on us because, like I said, I really hope it pays off.
My name is Julian Garza, and I'm a senior at Harlingen School of Health Professions. I participate in NHS, HOSA, Rotary. I do participate as much as I can every single model and try to get as much feedback as possible. I plan on going to Texas A&amp;M McCall College Station. And I just applied, so I'm still waiting for my acceptance letter. But I may, I plan on majoring in public health, and I plan on becoming a dentist after my studies. I'd like to thank my principal, Mrs. Garza, for always pushing me to strive for academic excellence. And I'd also like to thank my teacher, Mrs. Soina, for opening me up to dentistry because without her, I don't think I would have ever thought that I'd be going into dentistry.
Very nice.
All right, yes, a big round of applause to our amazing students. I'd like to recognize these students' parents also and family members. They may be watching our live board meeting broadcast. And I'd like to thank our high school PTSA organizations and Harlingen City Council PTSA President, Elias Arzaga. Students, as I call your name, just send a big wave, you know, through Zooms. For Harlingen High School, we have Sydney Portillo. And I guess if you want to also turn your mic on so you can come to the front of the screen and say hi. We also have Connor Reden.
Hello.
Connor. What's up, Connor?
From Harlingen High School South, we have Isabel Muniz. Hello. Corinne Reiniger could not make it tonight. She's at a volleyball game, but we know we have a proud mom in the boardroom. From Early College High School, we have Serenity Brown.
Hi.
Hi, Serenity.
We also have Alondra Hednamdez. Hey, everyone.
Hey, Alondra.
From Harlingen School of Health Professions, we have Bianca Ancisso. And then we have Julian Garza.
Hey, guys.
Awesome. Well, congratulations again, students. I'd like to invite our board, board of trustees to say a few words before we take our.
Mr. President, may I speak?
Yes, ma'am, go ahead.
Oh, aren't we just so proud? This is just such a wonderful part of every board meeting, and we are so super proud. What extraordinary students. I mean, really, this is just an exceptional group, and we're just so proud of you. And we will follow your careers, too, and we are going to watch what you're doing, and we're going to always say, that's an HCISD student, that's one of ours, that's our family. And so congratulations, and also thanks so much, Brianna, to the students and all who helped create these videos. They're, they're just fabulous. You know, they just get more and more interesting. They've always been great, but every time they put in a little new twist, and it's so interesting. And kudos, they're wonderful. And kudos to City Council PTA, by golly, for starting this program a long, long time ago, and to HCISD for continuing it. And to Ms. Brianna Vela Garcia for upping the ante in terms of bringing in the students. So thank you so much. We are delighted with the students who presented. We are delighted with the students who are honored. So what a team, and what a group of kiddos.
Thank you, Ms. Fleury. Any other trustees? Now, I, I would just like to echo Ms. Fleury's sentiments. We're, we're obviously very proud of you. And one of the favorite things is always, you know, during the, our school board meetings, recognizing the Students of the Month and then taking a big group selfie. But Brianna will have to do that right now. She'll take a screenshot of, of the screen. But I do, I do want to say congratulations. You know, I mean, this, I know this is, this is a different year. But, you know, you guys continue to, to do what you do best, and that's just be the best student you can be. So we couldn't be more proud because that makes not just our job as trustees, but, you know, the administration, your teachers, everybody's, everybody's super proud of you all because, you know, it, it's, you know, it's, it's been a different year, but, you know, you guys continue to march forward and, and charge on, and you'll continue to do that as you move on into college. And, and we have no doubt you're going to be successful there, too. So congratulations again, we're proud of you. Brianna, I want to echo Ms. Fleury's sentiments about the videos. You know, considering the circumstances, you know, these videos continue to be a, a great way to highlight these students. And, you know, I like, I like that they, you know, I'm assuming they're, they're shooting their own videos maybe and submitting them or submitting photos.
I'm doing the interview via Zoom, and Brandon, Brandon and I tag team, then he does the in-person interview.
Well, please thank Brandon also. Please thank, thank, thank Brandon also for, for that work because these videos are very, very well done. Thank you.
Okay, I'm going to do our group screenshot real quick, so if everybody can just start waving, and we'll just let you know when to stop waving. Awesome, I'm going to take one more picture. All right, perfect. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Hey, Mr. President, I think Julian was pretty smart to thank the principal. So he did, he did a great job, and, and the Red Raider wore his shirt, so I know Red Raider, so. Great job, guys.
Thank you all. Okay, moving on to item number three, approval of minutes. Item 3A, the October 13th, 2020 regular board meeting. Do you have a motion?
Yes, Mr. President, I move to approve the October 13th, 2020 regular board meeting minutes.
Second. I have a motion by Dr. Reiniger and a second by Mr. Powers. Hallows in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Item 3B, the October 29th, 2020 special board meeting. I move for approval of the minute to submit it. I have a motion by Mr. Powers.
Second motion.
Second by Ms. Fleury. Hallows in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Item 3C is the November 3rd, 2020 Team of Eight meeting.
Make a motion for approval.
Motion by Mr. Powers.
Second motion.
Second by Dr. Pettis. Hallows in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes, thank you. Now we'll move on to the approval of the consent calendar.
Mr. President, I'll move for approval of the consent calendar.
We have a motion by Mr. Powers.
Second.
And a second by Dr. Reiniger. Hallows in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Motion passes, thank you. We'll move on to item five, our principal's report by Ms. Tanya Garza from Zavala Elementary. Is she on?
She's on.
There she is.
I sure am. Good evening.
Good evening, Ms. Garza.
I'm going to start it by sharing my screen. This is a first for me for a principal report, right, via Zoom. So here we go. Is everybody able to see that? Ms. Fleury, if you can just give me a thumbs up? Perfect. I'm going to get it going. So, Mr. President, board members, Dr. Cavassos, administration, and audience, today you will see firsthand how an Apple-distinguished school has adjusted teaching and learning to promote student engagement during unprecedented times. Our current staff pictured here, right? That was how we took our end year pic. Are all Apple-certified teachers and CSO ambassadors. This means that all teachers have attended the self-paced journey through the Apple Teaching Learning Center. It is a self-paced program that builds skills on iPad and Mac that can be directly applied to activities with our students. Our Zavala staff has committed and have dedicated countless hours during their summer in researching best practices specifically for remote learning. Our teachers were very prescriptive in designing their grade level schedules to allow opportunity for Zoom instruction and CSO engagement that enhance critical thinking, collaboration, creativity, and communication for all three learning pathways. Our campus is unique in that teachers are well-versed with their Apple devices and their productivity, such as keynote, pages, iMovie, and clips. At the beginning of the year, we took the opportunity to provide professional development for our teachers in the area of student engagement through Zoom and CSO. Our professional learning goal was, how can we increase student engagement during remote instruction? We ensured teachers knew how to set up all technology devices such as Mac, iPad, document camera, and their Apple classroom TVs. By doing this, the teachers were able to navigate and share their computer screen, but also their document camera, where the majority of the teaching and learning takes place. This process allowed a smooth transition for all learning pathways. We then focused on student engagement. At Zavala Elementary, we think about teaching strategies and techniques that address the developmental, intellectual, behavioral, physical, and social emotional factors that enhance student learning. This school year, COVID-19 has altered student learning pathways and how teachers deliver instruction. Students are learning face-to-face, hybrid, and remote. These learning pathways have had our, our educators implementing new methods of peer interaction and student participation via Zoom and CSO. Remote instruction looks very different compared to the way it looked in the spring, and our teachers are planning lessons so that students in all three learning platforms experience the same amount and degree of student engagement. Their lessons focus on how are our children being academically and physically engaged, and how are we providing social, emotional engagement? In order to increase student academic and physical engagement, teachers have established Zoom norms and routines that foster behaviors that are conducive to learning. Teachers are using visual cues, gestures, and breakout rooms to help students navigate through Zoom. They are creating Zoom and CSO lessons that appeal to students' interest and promote their curiosity. Students are given the opportunity to create through the use of their iPad and share their products through CSO. Teachers are conducting Zoom lessons simultaneously with face-to-face, hybrid, and remote students while keeping all students actively engaged. Our students continue to actively participate in their PE and music classes to simulate their kinesthetic learning that all students require, especially at this time. I'm going to pause for a minute, and you can see that the picture on the left is our face-to-face students. Social distancing is taking place. And then the, the photos to the right of your screen, the smaller photos, those are our remote students. One at the top is doing her jump rope skills, and that's actually a video that our coach gets to see on CSO. On the bottom, you see a parent that has posted to Twitter and tagged our campus and our coach, right? Because he was able to get his children actively engaged in the PE lesson. Here, I'm going to pause for a second to show you, this is an actual activity of a first-grade remote student that submitted his activity through CSO.
I took a picture for sound of my speaker, my phone, and my TV. And sound is important because it, it helps you hear things.
So there was a lot of background noise, but keep in mind, he is remote. He is in a home where there are two other siblings. But these are just a few of the videos and assignments and activities that we get to see on a daily basis through CSO. This is a trying time for our students and their families, and Zavala is a place where many of them feel a sense of normalcy. The social-emotional part of learning has been an area that we have kept at the forefront. Our campus counselor has been meeting with all students once a week via Zoom and small groups along with CSO activities to promote positive emotions in students that will facilitate the learning process and minimize negative behaviors. Families are also given the opportunity to meet via Zoom or by appointment with our campus counselor and administration when needed. So teachers continue to persevere and monitor student Zoom attendance and participation, CSO assignments, and relevant data. Our PLCs have focused on our current student data and creating digital data forms instead of our typical data walls. This data allows teachers the opportunity to collab with their, collaborate with their colleagues, regroup students based on need, and ensure their lessons are providing the necessary skills to enhance growth. Student growth continues to be at the forefront, and it begins with student engagement. At this time, I'm going to stop sharing my screen, and I'm going to have Mr. Strubart help me and share a video that showcases student engagement at Zavala Elementary. Student engagement has always been a top priority in my classroom, especially this year. Now more than ever, it's so important to keep students interested so that learning can still take place. We have chat box discussions for a more controlled setting and shout-out sessions for a more spontaneous approach. We do live labs to engage the students with fun science experiments to go along with the concepts that we are learning. Some students even choose where we create the labs at home. We also use NearPod. It's great because it provides students with interactive, game-like science simulations. The students can engage with science content like real scientists.
In order to engage the hard us, physical educators, and us as teachers, we want to make sure that we engage them by having a smile all the time in Zoom. We want to have, to show them compassion, kindness, and we want to show them love. And we want to make sure that they know that we are there for them. Students just want to have movement and physical education, and they want to make sure that they're enjoying lifetime sports for the rest of their lives. And they want to make sure, we want to make sure that they're eating right, make sure that they're exercising, and making sure that they're, they're doing sports that they're going to enjoy forever.
Student engagement looks a little different in my classroom this year. In my kindergarten classroom, my students are experiencing new methods of peer interaction and participation. They have learned to use the Zoom features to participate in my lessons. For example, annotation. They get, they're, they get excited and are eager to show and write or draw to their students what they've learned. Another thing we do is when we learn a new letter of the week or the day, I'll show them something here in the classroom that begins with that letter, and then I'll send them in a scavenger hunt for them to go around their home and look for something that begins with that letter. So utilizing things around their home makes them excited and want to share with the whole class. I share my classroom with my students. I want them to feel like they're physically here with me in the classroom. And as I, as a teacher, I try to bring my classroom into their home environment, and I do that by singing, dancing, cheering them on to make them feel excited about learning. To help students succeed for student engagement...
To help students succeed for student engagement, I've assisted in different ways. I offer different means for different students and for different parents. We offer things online, whether it's through social media, talking about clipping skills, ways to succeed, having a positive growth mindset. We've also reached out through YouTube with our morning assemblies. I do a little counselor snippet on there to offer tips to both parents and to students. I also offer weekly Zooms every week to meet with students on different topics that we may be sharing. And I think that a lot of the times, we focus on the educational part, and we also hit, though, the good things. We hit that social-emotional part here as much as we can because we know that with student engagement, the child needs to be a whole child in order to succeed.
No matter the circumstances, we're gonna keep on moving forward with creative and innovative ways to reach every learner.
So at this time, I'd like to thank our outstanding leadership in our school board and district administrative team. I'd also, if we could, I'd like to take just a few minutes, or one minute, to recognize my phenomenals Zavala staff who are actually on our Zoom meeting today. They go above and beyond for our students each and every day. There's not one day that I'm not getting a text message, an email from them at all different types of the day. I mean, they do so much. They are my extended family, so I wanna thank them because they make my job just that much easier. So if my teachers could turn on their videos, their cameras, and just kinda wave to the board, I'm excited that all of y'all made it. And again, y'all are amazing. I thank each and every one of you, especially during this time because, you know, things are different. But you put forth your best effort, you're there at work every day, and really working very, very hard. So they're the best teachers in the universe, by the way.
Thank you, Ms. Garza. And I'll open up to the board. Did they have any questions or comments from Ms. Garza and her amazing staff?
Mr. President, if I may?
Yes, sir, Dr. Wees.
You know, I had the privilege of being at your school a couple of years ago, Ms. Garza, and you have an amazing, amazing group of people. I love the video, love the feedback, and love the things you guys are doing. I love the fact that, you know, Joe, one of my good friends, are you still there, Joe? Doing a fantastic job, right? We know it's about nutrition, we know it's about movement, I love seeing that. Oziel, always doing a fantastic job. Good to see you, man. Hi, baby girl, good to see you. Kelsey, Rosemary, Melissa, Paul, you guys are doing a fantastic job. And this video really highlights all that, right? The chat boxes, the shout-out sessions, you know, moving and dancing. And I mean, I kinda like, it's really exciting to see this because I wanna go and be part of that. Maybe I can, and be part of the dancing and be part of the excitement. My only question, Ms. Garza, of course, you've done an amazing job, is, and I need you to answer this if you can, is will the skid dissolve faster in cold water or hot water?
I'm gonna bypass that because my science teacher is right here. Experiment, I don't know if you'd even follow, if y'all even follow her on Twitter, but I got scared when I saw that at first on Twitter because she was playing with fire. But she's amazing. So Ms. Lada does an amazing, amazing job. Like, what was the question again?
Do the skids dissolve faster in hot water or cold water?
Oh, Ms. Lada, what was it? Hot water. Hot water.
Awesome.
Wow.
Great job, Ms. Garza, congratulations. Great video, great, great teachers. Thank you for being here.
Thank you, Dr. Wees. Mr. DeNeal?
Thank you. I don't have any quiz for you, Ms. Garza, but I do wanna just say a great job. Your staff is fantastic. I love the presentation. I got an insight of what you all do every single day. I have a question, I have two questions. One, what, and I kind of doubt so I wouldn't forgive you, what's a nice surprise that you've noticed so far during this COVID?
It was a little bit choppy, I only got...
What was the, what was a nice surprise that you've noticed so far by teaching the way we're doing during the COVID session these last two months?
I think one of the things that I can share is that we were already a very close-knit staff, and I think that just this experience that we're going through has brought us even closer. More so than just at that colleague level. We're checking in on each other and how is everyone doing. But the teachers are collaborating to help each other with the instruction, with the activities that are being pushed out there. Things are very different for the students, but they're trying their very best. And that's all that we can ask of our families that are within our community, is that they give us the best that they possibly can. But overall, I think our campus has come closer together. Our teachers are collaborating like never before, and we're putting forth those activities and the instruction for our students that they deserve.
Wow, great. And my follow-up is, what's a challenge that you've, that you all have encountered that's a little bit of a surprise?
A challenge, I would say, would be more, how do we reach those handful of students or families that we are not engaging? For whatever reason it may be, is it because they're moving homes, their parents are, you know, switching jobs? Or where are these children staying during the day if they're not staying with their parents that they're not participating with us? And I think that's been the most challenging part for my teachers because my teachers are gonna be there, they're gonna plan, they're gonna deliver, and they're gonna put forth their effort. But what about those few families, those few students, those siblings that for some reason, even with a home visit, and we try, how can we bring them in and not lose that instructional piece with them?
Well, you know, Ms. Garza, Zavala's been a rock star school prior here, and you guys continue to be a rock star school during. So good job, keep it up, and thank all teachers and everybody that's making that campus and reaching out to all the students. So thank you, and keep up the great work.
Mr. President?
Yes, my boy.
Thank you. Tony, this was extraordinary tonight, I mean, truly extraordinary. And I appreciate very much Mr. DeLeon's questions because that elicited some information that otherwise perhaps we would not have known. But I just want to say that we have sat in multiple meetings with the leading people, I believe, anywhere, talking to us and talking us through the implementation of how we are doing this tri-level meeting and teaching. I have never understood it as well as I do right now from your presentation. I just really do believe what you have put together tonight and the manner in which it's been presented is exceptional. And I would like to say to Mr. Strubart and to Dr. Cavassos, you know, any opportunities we have to take this show on the road, this is, this really would be a fabulous opportunity because if we who are inside are still having difficulty conceptualizing the implementation of virtual learning, then imagine what those who are at arm's length and yet care equally deeply are struggling with trying to learn and process. So congratulations, Zavala. You know, you're obviously really doing it. Yes, it is wonderful that you had the advantage of already being in Apple School, already being very familiar with technology. And this really does show what happens when a company in America does begin to partner with education. And so I think they would like to see this as well. Thank you, and thank you to your teachers. Clearly, the workload that they are doing is also extraordinary and exceptional. It is beyond anything most people can comprehend. And so your teachers and your staff, you really got it together over there. And I'm proud of my neighborhood school, Zavala. So thank you very, very much. And please do, if there are opportunities to share this, I hope that we will be leaping toward them because I think the community is hungry to know what we're really talking about in education. So thanks a lot. You all, just kudos, kudos. You did a great job, exceptional.
Thank you, Ms. Flerier.
Mr. President?
Dr. Reiniger? Yes?
Please, just, I won't repeat what my colleague said, and it's all, every word of it is just absolutely so true. I just, you know, what really struck me was how you've taken technology, and you all were already the experts, and you've amped it up, but you never forgot the heart and the love and the action, right? You just, and that's the magic potion, right? That's the combination. And it's truly amazing. And really, these little bitties, the little bitty ones that you work with, I don't know how you're doing it. You are just, we're just awestruck by each and every one of you. Ms. Garza, great leadership, you know, just great teamwork all around. Thank you so much. Thank you for just not letting go of those that you're still struggling to engage. We're just so proud of you all, and we know you're just working so hard. So we thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Reiniger. Dr. Cavassos, yeah?
Yeah, real quick, I just wanna thank Ms. Garza and your entire team. I recognize some of the faces that were on the back-to-school video and that you all didn't know what you were doing. And I think Mr. Arnold broke something, I don't know, I was following everybody. And I know Ms. Lada was, so several of you. And Coach Conno, you acted like you didn't know what a Zoom was, but you all are amazing. And the best of HCISD was on display tonight. And I wanna thank you, and it warms our heart from the board level and from our level. We just thank you for doing the heavy lifting and not giving up on our students. You all are amazing. And I don't know if that was a push-up, Coach Conno, or not, but you know, I know you were doing something. But hey, guys, thank you, thank you, thank you. And Ryan, I saw Ryan a little earlier, thank you for the pledge. And you all are doing an incredible job. Keep championing the great work for all you do, I appreciate it. So my heart goes out to you all. Thank you, guys.
That looked like one of my push-ups, really. Now, also, I wanna say thank you, you know, everything, you know, everybody's already kind of touched on everything. I do wanna touch on the counselor piece. You know, I think it's important that, you know, and it really meant a lot to see that, you know, that you all are reaching out to your students in that form and, you know, accommodating that part, you know, especially the mental health side of everything. It's very important from, you know, just engaging them, talking to them, keeping them physically active, all that. You know, 'cause I know especially the ones at home miss it. You know, they miss being around their friends. And, you know, I think they, you know, for the most part, they understand what's going on, but they still, you know, like Dr. Reiniger said, it's the little ones. You know, sometimes they don't comprehend everything, so. And we don't know who's explaining what to them. So, you know, thank you, thank you for that part to your counselor. And thank you all for caring.
And I think Ryan wants to be a superintendent, but no, but he has a long time, Ryan. Just stay where you are, Ryan, doing a great job, Miko.
All right. Thanks again, Ms. Garza, and thank you, everybody, for what you guys are doing at Zavala. Thank you. Move on to item number six, public comments for agenda topics. Ms. Brown, do we have public comments for agenda topics?
No, sir, we do not.
Thank you. Item number seven is public audience for non-agenda topics. Do we have a public audience today?
No, sir, we do not.
Thank you, Ms. Brown. Moving on to item number eight, matters relating to transformation and school support. Item 8A, Transforming Teaching and Learning Committee Report, Dr. Alisa Niola.
Thank you, Mr. President, Dr. Cavassos, board members, senior administration, and audience. Last Tuesday, November 3rd, we held our Transforming Teaching and Learning Committee meeting. We had only one topic, but a very important topic. Mrs. Veronica Cortan, our administrator for organizational development, presented on the teacher incentive allotment. And so just earlier, we actually saw why an opportunity like the teacher incentive allotment is such a critical piece. The Texas Commission of Public School Finance and the Texas Education Agency have set aside an allotment of monies designed to attract and retain the most effective educators. You know, obviously, we saw a clear display of what these effective educators look like. And so through this incentive allotment, it is designed to set a realistic path for our teachers to achieve those top salaries that can range as high as $100,000. And so this opportunity was made available to school districts. It was an option, and so certainly HCISD knew how critical it was for us to take this opportunity to really recognize and compensate our teachers as much as possible. Obviously, over these last few months, we've seen that there really is no degree of compensation that is enough for all the work that they have done in moving our district through this pandemic. But anything that we can do to support that, we're going to do. And so the expectation for districts that are wanting to participate in this teacher incentive allotment is that teachers will create a local designation system. It'll be upon districts to identify what process will they use to identify these top educators. So the incentives that teachers will have available to them are going to range anywhere from possibly $3,000 to as much as $32,000, dependent on where they work because the incentives are designed to compensate those teachers that are working in those challenging campuses that are very high need and really move to distributing the most effective teachers across all campuses. So over the next six months, as a district, we are going to work to identify that system. How will we identify those high-performing teachers? We're gonna follow a plan much like what we did when we developed our strategic plan. And so that was really designed around bringing the voices of our stakeholders together through advisory committees, through focus groups, through listening tours from our teachers so we can identify, go through a process of identifying how are we going to find those individuals and work through that process. So between now and the month of April, we will work on developing that plan. We will submit it to the state because it does need to go through a process of evaluation for validity and reliability. So we will submit that plan sometime in April. Once that plan is approved, then that will be what guides us in identifying those individuals. And so over the course of the 21, 22 school year, we will put that system in place and identify those highly effective teachers with an expected payout of September 2023. So we identify them, then we have to work with the state through the whole process of the distribution of funds. And so we're really excited. This is an opportunity that has not been out there for our teachers. And so to be able to, at minimum, compensate them financially for all the work that they do is just an incredible opportunity. And so we look forward to this process. Over the next six months, we will be coming back to the board regularly to update you on how this process is rolling along to ensure that all of us are staying consistent and are communicating what that is going to look like. But just an exciting opportunity as we look forward to the next few years. And I think it's gonna be a really game-changer in moving our district forward. So I'm gonna turn it over to Dr. Belinda Reiniger. She chairs our Transforming Teaching and Learning Committee meeting for any additional thoughts. Dr. Reiniger?
Thank you, Dr. Niola. You know, this is, this really is unprecedented in the best way. We've been using that term to capture some times in 2020 that we'd rather forget. But this is something that our teachers deserve. And HCISD is going to be thoughtful and thorough in the planning of this. We will take, as Dr. Niola said, six months to put this, you know, the planning in place. And we will learn more as a board and as a district. I love the plans for engagement. I think that's just tremendously important. And then that baseline year where we're collecting data and then, you know, being able to put this in place. So it's a long-term approach. But I think the other exciting thing to me is that this allotment, that teachers who receive these allotments, then they keep these designations as they move forward with their careers. And so, you know, just a really tremendous opportunity. And I think all the board is really looking forward to see how this develops. really looking forward to see how this develops, and I have no doubt it's going to be great.
Thank you, Dr. Reiniger, Dr. Nyola. We'll move on to item number nine, matters relating to business services. Item 9A is consideration for approval to award construction services contract for the Harlingen C I S D baseball field's backstop renovations, bid number CNST 1020. Mr. Julio Cabasos.
Thank you, Mr. Hyman, it's Dr. Cabasos, board members. Item 9A is consideration approval of contract for baseball and softball field backstop renovations. You know, let me share this screen here real quick if I can. Can you all see that?
Yes.
Yes.
So this is a ranking sheet that we received, five proposals.
Julio, go ahead and open the attachment.
I'm sorry, I got the wrong one. Hold on a second. I mean...
Thank you.
There you go. So this is the ranking sheet for the proposals that we received. We did receive five proposals, and we ranked the proposals, and we're recommending the top-ranked offer of G and G contractors. They received 111 points, so they're a top-ranked offer, and the total bid for that was $207,875. You can see that it's not the low bid. A low bid came in from Ari Frydick of $160,000, but they received the least points. So, you know, they did not rank out, you know, they did not submit a good proposal at all. So even though they were a low bid, they received the least points of these other proposals. So we're recommending G and G contractors for this particular agenda item. I do have some pictures of what it's going to look like, if I can share those here real quick. Can you see that?
Yes, sir.
So this is the backstop area that each one of our fields, you know, the baseball and the softball fields will be getting, I mean, it's kind of looks similar to that. Let me see, you know, with, you know, the poles and the whole wiring and everything. Again, we're recommending the top-ranked offer of G and G Construction. Be glad to answer any questions that the board members might have.
Mr. President, I have a question.
Can we get a motion, and then we'll discuss?
Well, I think we're just, it's fine to have discussion. We don't necessarily have a motion yet, but if you'd like to do it that way, that's fine.
Okay, go ahead.
So question is on the ranking, Mr. Cabasos. I don't know the last time that the board has revisited the ranking criteria, but I would ask maybe Dr. Cabasos and Julio Cabasos to weigh in. Are we in a good place right now for, you know, where we feel the ranking system is working? I know you mentioned that the lowest bid, you know, received also less points and all, which is fine, but I just want to be sure, because it's been a while since we last revisited the ranking system for bids like this, and are we pretty happy with that it's working very well for the district?
Yeah, I mean, we think, you know, that it is. I mean, it's a good idea to look at it every, you know, every year, every two years, you know, at the most, the last time that we looked at it was when we did the, when we were going out for bids for the UTRGV project. We adjusted it at that point in time, but we can certainly bring it back to the board, maybe discuss it in the facility committee meeting, and bring some recommendations and have that discussion. But it's been working well for us. Oscar, you might want to chime in as well, but yeah, we can certainly look at it.
Yes, the last time we made changes was recently, the UTRGV bid, we made some changes to the proposal, and we got some input from UTRGV, how they do things, so we made some changes. The problem with the package of the low bidder is that they just were missing a lot of information. They look at a bunch of zeros and ones, incomplete packages, or just missing information totally. And so if they're not responsible enough to put a good package together, then says a little bit about how they process paperwork and care about the bid that they're submitting. I think sometimes they just kind of slap something together and turn it in to meet the deadline, but don't really put a lot of time and effort in doing that, so we kind of feel that maybe they didn't do a good job on putting the bid numbers together either. So that's why they score low.
Well, I'm very happy to hear that it works, and I'm very happy to hear that you all are happy with it, and I just wanted to, you know, whenever you all think it's appropriate to bring it back to the board for a relook or consideration, that would be fine by me, but I'm happy by those responses.
Sure. So our budget for this was $200,000. So these other bids came within budget, we feel comfortable with going with G and G contractors. They've done a lot of work for us in the past, and they've done a good job so far.
I make a motion for approval, Mr. President.
Thank you, Dr. Perez. Do I have a second?
Second.
Dr. Reiniger? Thank you. Is that why their bid was so low, Oscar, Mr. Cabasos? I mean, not that it matters, but I'm wondering if that's, because the other bids were pretty comparable, weren't they?
Yes. And then sometimes they go with subcontractors that are not licensed or bonded or experienced. We had that issue with another general contractor that, the fencing company, just didn't know how to put a project together and read specifications and turn submissions to get the right product approved. And sometimes it has to do with the subs that they're getting prices from may not be very qualified. So that's why low bid is not necessarily the best.
Right. All right, thank you, Mr. Tapia. Okay, so we had a motion by Dr. Perez, a second by Dr. Reiniger. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you all. Item 9B is a consideration and possible action to adopt resolution for purchase of alleyway property from the city of Harlingen, subject to reimbursement by Circle K. Mr. Cabasos.
Thank you, Ms. Hyman, it's Dr. Cabasos, board members. So, item 9B is consideration and possible action to adopt a resolution to purchase the alleyway between, in the Gordon Knicks. So let me show you a picture of this. I think I have a picture of it. Can you see that?
Yes.
Yes.
So this is the Gordon Knicks property, and this is where our athletic ticket office is. This is the alleyway that, you know, it belongs to the city. You know, this was our parking lot, and this, of course, are the building. So, you know, the city has agreed to sell us this alleyway for $12,000, which is what it was appraised for. You can see, this is the appraisal, it got appraised for $12,000, and the city has agreed to sell this, you know, this alleyway, and in turn, you know, Circle K will add the $12,000 to the purchase price of the Gordon Knicks building. So we're, you know, we're going to pay the city, Circle K will reimburse us at closing. So we're comfortable with that. We did have a meeting with the Circle K attorneys last week, and they said that that's fine, that they agreed to that. So, you know, we're recommending to purchase this alleyway, and then in turn, when we sell it, we sell it back to Circle K, and they will reimburse us at closing. Glad to answer any questions that board members might have.
Mr. President?
Go ahead, Mr. Perez.
I move that we approve the resolution to purchase the alleyway as recommended by staff for $12,000 from the city of Harlingen.
I second the motion.
A motion by Mr. Powers and a second by Dr. Bob Wees. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, Mr. Cabasos. Moving on to item 10, matters relating to human services. Item 10A, approval of recommended revisions to Policy Update 115 on second reading. Dr. Alisa Nyola.
Thank you, Mr. President, Dr. Cabasos, board members, senior administration, and audience. Tonight, we bring forward for approval recommended revisions brought by TASB through Policy Update 115. Last month, through our Policy and Audit Committee, we reviewed 13 policies that were being recommended for revision, as I mentioned, under Update 115. This Update 115 focused on updating and reorganizing several of the policies that are part of the FFE series of the policy manual that revolve around student welfare. Several of these policies were revised to incorporate new Title IX regulations that came into effect in August and now are being codified into the policy manual regarding sexual harassment under Title IX, and establish the procedures that school districts need to follow as they respond to any allegations of sexual harassment. In addition to those changes, Update 115 also included several other policies that were affected by legislation from the '86 legislative session that were not included in Update 114, and so they're being now brought forward as part of 115. And then numerous minor changes that brought forward clarity to the administrative code. Tonight, we bring these forward for your approval on second reading. Again, administration recommends approval of these revisions.
Mr. President?
Yes, ma'am.
I move approval as recommended by staff of the policies on second reading.
Okay.
We have a motion by Ms. Flory and a second by Mr. Robert De Leon. Any further discussion? Not, we'll vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, Dr. Nyola. We'll move on to item number 11, adjournment to closed or executive session pursuant to Texas Government Code Sections 551.071, 551.072, 551.074, and 551.082, the Open Meeting Act for the following purposes: Discussion of employment of teachers and other professional staff, and discussion of administrators. We are now in executive session.
Pushed.
We are now reconvenienced to open session for action on matters discussed in the executive session. Item 12A, consider employment of teachers and other professional staff.
Mr. President, I move that we approve the teachers and staff as recommended by staff in executive session.
We have a motion by Ms. Powers.
I second the motion.
Second by Dr. Wees. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. There is no action on item 12B, and this meeting is adjourned. Thank you.
We're still on.
We're still live.
Five hundred and eighty.
We're still live.